All right, I'm going to assume that TC, that the other is ready to go. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. We will start off with roll calls.
Councilmember Leeta Dahlhoff.
Present.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy.
Present.
Councilmember Eileen Swarthout.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Althouser.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabe.
I have not heard yet, so we will hopefully he'll be here in a moment.
Councilmember Kelly Von Holtz.
Present.
Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
I am present. Welcome, everyone, and join me in a pledge to our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under us in this world.
Great. And next is special items. And we have a proclamation for Martin Luther King Day. And Councilmember Jefferson will read that proclamation.
Proclamation, whereas the civil rights movement in the 1960s profoundly impacted the course of American history and continues to shape the direction and debate of our society. And whereas Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., a civil rights leader devoted his life to the nonviolent advancements of civil rights and public service. And whereas Dr. King believed in a nation of freedom and justice for all and challenged all community members to help build a more perfect union and live up to the purpose and potential of the United States of America. And whereas Dr. King's dream is inspirational and important today as when he first expressed it over 60 years ago. And whereas even with the progress achieved during the civil rights movement and subsequent decades, inequities, injustices, racism, and other forms of discrimination and oppression are still prevalent in our society. And whereas Dr. King's life was struck down by a bullet of bigotry on April 4, 1968, but his dream of pursuing a world from prejudice and injustice lives on. And whereas we honor and celebrate Dr. King's memory and importantly, we also preserve his legacy that calls upon all of us to stand up against injustice and protect our most sacred tenants of democracy. And whereas Dr. King always led by example and provided a framework for how each of us can shape the future by calling out injustice and continuing to work towards a more equitable society. Now therefore, our mayor Debbie Sullivan, Mayor of the City of Tomwater, do hereby proclaim January 15, 2024, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And she urges people to join her and take this opportunity to reflect upon Dr. King's vision and rededicate ourselves to continuing to advance the principles of justice and equality for all. Signed in the City of Tomwater, Washington and recognized on this day, 16th of January in the year 2024. Debbie Sullivan, Mayor.
Thank you. So we were going to have Dr. Thelma Jackson attend tonight and also the Reverend Reeves. However, they were not able to attend, but we do have an honored guest in our audience, and that would be Lesser Dixon. And he is with the Fred U. Harris Lodge, and he's also very involved in the Juneteenth celebration. And so I'm going to ask him to come to the podium, and I will present him with the proclamation.
Just a few words.
Okay, I'll let you say a few words.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much to the City of Tomwater for this recognition of Martin Luther King Jr. Day, a day that has been celebrated for a few years. But it's great to see that the City of Tomwater appreciate diversity and equity and is recognizing the work that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. have done and are pursuing his dream, just as many of us are, freedom for all. And although I was not prepared to speak, I just came to support Dr. Thelma Jackson. But you know, the line is be always ready. So thank you again for this opportunity and for this proclamation. It shall be displayed prominently within our appropriate lodges. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So the celebration yesterday was amazing. There was a huge turnout, and Councilmember Jefferson and a Councilmember Von Holtz also joined me in that celebration. So that was a great celebration yesterday. All right, so next is public comment. And do we have anyone signed up online?
We do not.
All right. I have one person in council chambers, Pamela Hanson. If you come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mayor Sullivan. Pamela Hanson, PO Box 14521, Tomwater, Washington, 98511. And I'll try and make this quick. What a wonderful proclamation, by the way. Thank you. Speak truth to power. Instead of continuing with my definition this past week, I Googled it. You should too. So the truth and power of the Tomwater TV station was joked about last Tuesday at the work session. I suggest that the first addition to the televised meeting schedule is every hearings examiner meeting and the whole schedule of meetings for the city every month to be ran every hour or two or at a predictable time every day. Glenwell's latest three-story apartment complex project could have benefited from my and probably others' input regarding crime prevention through environmental design. My book is paperback, but there is an ebook, a different version, available online. Aside from federal fire and safety requirements, Tomwater has the authority to improve building design through setbacks, et cetera. Specifically, in between Toyota and Home Depot, there are now windows next to the sidewalk that are perfect for smash and grabs. The indoor hallways and stairways look advantageous for criminals to escape into doors, pull fire alarms, have fire doors closed, and divert law enforcement if there are fire doors to section off the buildings. Why listen to me? I patrolled one of the best, day after day, checking the massive gauge wall, the Tacoma Sheraton. I lived in one of the worst buildings with blood in the stairwell, emergency lights that lasted less than an hour, one elevator not making it to the first floor, and some fire doors that did not close because the carpet install was too tall for even those heavy doors to close. On a separate occasion, the elevator shafts flooded into the basement laundry level. That was a crime-filled 12-story apartment home less than four blocks from the Alaska Legislature. Another of my truth to power around that time got a very thick envelope delivered from a Capital City Fire and Rescue official to an unsuspecting me to give to my boss that I told on as the night manager of that hotel. Speaking truth lasts decades, if not a lifetime. Both Alaska properties have connections to Seattle. Power, B spoke to A and then C made B homeless years ago. Not one, but two legal authorities said that because B spoke to A, it doesn't matter who made her homeless. But does it matter? Here's how it matters in the bigger picture. A and C are friendlies, meaning builders and/or nonprofit contractors. So when C or other Cs eventually get upset at A, and the Cs may raise rents in City A or cause lower rents in D or E cities, causing businesses and people to move and ruin the tax base of City A. B didn't put lipstick on a pig, B just told the truth. Please, for the people of the city, you need to put the hearings examiner meetings on live TV along with the whole city meeting schedule. That is not a potential budget buster. It is simple, and some of it is provable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who wants to make a public comment? All right, with that, we're going to move to the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent calendar?
This is Michael Sumo.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second and moved by Councilmember Althouser, seconded by Councilmember Jefferson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. All right, the motion carries. And with that, we have the approval of the minutes of the city council work session from November 28, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of January 4, payment vouchers, service provider agreement with Kenyon Denzen P L L C for the Right-Away Legal Service Amendment Number Four, service provider agreement with Cardinal Architects P C for the Historic Brew Tower renovation amendment number five, fiber optic agreement with WashDOT amendments 14 and 15, on-call materials testing service provider agreement with Materials Testing and Consulting, Inc. Amendment Number Two, on-call materials testing service provider agreement with Pacific Testing and Inspection Amendment Number Two, small works contract with J.A. Morris Construction for the tenant improvements for City of Tomwater's space at South Fugitive Sound Community College, contract with the State Department of Commerce for the 2005 Comprehensive Plan Periodical Update for Middle Housing Plan Grant contract with the State Department of Commerce for the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update Planning Grant, bargaining agreement between the City of Tomwater and the Tomwater Police Guild, 2024 council meeting schedule and summer recess, fire department staffing adjustments, and the 2024 Long Range Planning Program. So there was a multitude of things on that consent agenda, and we did not go through the alphabet completely, so we're good. All right, next item is public school district. First, I might have just backtrack a little bit. I do see that the Police Guild President is here. Did you want to make any statement or anything? We are going to be signing the agreement later this week. All right, great. All right, with that, then we will move to the public hearing of the Tomwater School District Replacement EPNO Levy, and I will turn it over to City Administrator Parks.
Great, thank you, councilmembers. Thank you, Mayor. So I'm here just to introduce to you the Superintendent of the Tomwater School District, Mr. Kevin Bogutin. He is here to talk to us about the Tomwater School District Replacement Educational Programs and Operations Levy. So with that, I will turn it over to Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor Sullivan. Thank you, councilmembers, just for having me. I'll be brief. We have an election on February 13, and this levy is on that. And so I'm here just to talk briefly about it. This is not new. This is a replacement levy that's been on a regular cycle coming before this community and statewide. For those of you that don't know me, I'm new as superintendent, so just started in July, moved here from Oregon. So one of the myths of coming from Oregon to Washington was that schools, public education here in the state is fully funded. And so, you know, coming that, that was one of the things that I was told out of MacLeary. It's in the Constitution. If that was true, I don't know if we'd be here talking about this levy, at least in the same context that we are today. This levy around educational programs and operations is really about funding our programs that are necessary for operations. I would love to say it's just all extras. And there are some things, I guess, maybe some people would see in. We have all of our athletics and activities. That's not a part of apportionment for this state. And so if your child plays sports, band, music, drama. Again, I think most of us see that as something that our schools should be providing and our kids should have access to, but that is what our levy pays for. You would also assume that special education and our students that need the most support to be successful in our schools of significant obstacles to overcome, that we would fully fund special education. Sadly, we do not. We don't fund it, fully fund it at the federal level, and we don't fully fund it at the state level. Therefore, we have levy up, this levy to come and help fill those gaps. It is a significant portion of the Tomwater school budget. It is 17.5% of our budget, or 17.3%, about $20 million a year. So a significant impact if this wouldn't pass. The last thing I'll say is it's $2.50 per thousand. It has been at that level for the last number of cycles. We actually are in a place where we can't fully collect $2.50. We're hoping the legislature at some point maybe changes that. Certain places in the state can collect more. Our taxpayers have had a history of supporting these kinds of measures. From the most recent levy for the school district passed at about 63.5%. It takes 50% to pass these levies. So again, this is a community that has demonstrated ongoing support for school levies, whether it be for facilities or this EPNO. So I think I'll take any questions you have. I hope like gives a nice overview of what this levy is about.
Great, any questions? Councilmember Jefferson, did you have a question?
Yes, so I understand that the maximum is $2.50.
Yeah, so historically, the last, so if we goes back, we collected $2.04, I think, in this last cycle. We are at a place, property values in Tomwater have gotten to a place, legislation on this says you can collect the greater or the lesser of $2.50 per thousand of assessed value or a formula that is $1,500 times your student enrollment. So the lesser of those is what we get to collect. And so it will vary based on enrollment, but it is under the $2.50 cap.
Okay, so knowing your budget, that's probably not enough, but that's the maximum that we can go with?
Yeah, if we actually could collect all of what our voters have approved, it would be about $25 to $26 million. Over the course of four years, $110 million. So it is a significant, like, we're losing, you know, $5 to $6 million a year just by some caps in the legislation.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? So my understanding is this is an informational, we do not take action? Yes, so, but I mean after the hearing, correct? Okay. So I will then go ahead and open up for public comment. I just wanted to know before I went further down the road. All right, opening up for public comment. Is there any, was there a sign-up sheet for public comment? Was there anyone signed up? All right. I'll call again for public comment if anyone in the audience wants to speak on public comment. One more time, public comment. I am closing the public hearing. And so this is, we do not need to take action on this. And so thank you for coming and presenting another forum in which this information can come out and we can, and have community input. So thank you.
Mayor, could I ask a question quickly?
Yes, Councilmember Cathy.
Thank you. I was just wondering what would suffer the most if this did not pass? When these school levies come, we always hear what it funds, but what happens if it doesn't?
Yeah, so if this doesn't, if this would not pass, so 85% of our budget is on people. And so this levy is all about people, really, and people that are having the direct impact. So class sizes would rise, sports, athletics, drama, music support, lots of our STEM activities. Again, a lot of basic operation. We fund extra nurses counseling, so it would be a pretty drastic cut. We have about 750 employees. The levy funds about 300 of those.
So when a levy is out there, and there is that possibility, do you begin at least maybe on a scratch pad or something? Start prioritizing that possibility, or do you just pray?
Well, a little, I am definitely going on in some history. I'm doing about 25 of these presentations across the communities who are, so I'm not taking for granted that we've passed it, even though, again, it takes 50% to pass these measures. We've been having history of passing it at 60. We would start in earnest after the February 13 if this didn't pass. You can go out to the voters one additional time in a 12-month period. So again, I have some ideas where that would happen, but it would, I have enough issues to go look at and not worry about too many hypotheticals quite yet.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, with that, we will move on to our next public hearing item, which is regarding ordinance number O 2023-001, master permit with Zipli Fiber Pacific LLC, and Mary Heather Ames will be doing the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I am ready for my presentation, and it's a very short one, just an introduction of what you'll be seeing during this public hearing. So first, I would like to show you the references which build the framework for this process. This comes from portions of the Revised Code of Washington, or RCW, and our own Tomwater Municipal Code. RCW 35 covers cities and towns generally. RCW 3599 covers telecommunications cable television service use of right-of-way and includes things like permits, relocation, and the ability for a city or town to require additional ducts or conduits. RCW 35A 47040 is specific to the permitting process. An item of note is the requirement for a second reading of the ordinance, which means that council will be able to act on this ordinance at the next meeting after this public hearing, if so desired. And finally, our own Tomwater Municipal Code outlines all the items for a telecommunications master permit in Chapter 11.06. This is for Zipli Fiber Pacific. You may not have heard of them. They are a telecommunications service provider, but the first time we're really seeing this name in Tomwater as Zipli acquired facilities that were previously held by another company, and those facilities were installed in the 1990s. So we haven't really been talking about them recently. Zipli's current facilities are only serving a handful of enterprise customers, but they are planning expansion of service to cover all residents and businesses within Tomwater in the next few years. And they were invited to be here. They're based in Portland, and they were fairly confident they wouldn't have power to be able to join in. So as far as process, they submitted an application and fee for a telecommunications master permit. Then we worked with Zipli to produce an agreement that works within the legal framework that I mentioned and is acceptable to both the city and Zipli. And this evening, we're talking about this for this public hearing. The ordinance is in effect the master permit, which allows for Zipli to have facilities like conduit, fiber wires, et cetera, within the Tomwaters' right-of-way. It does not allow for construction of new facilities, but instead details the permitting needed for construction, which is important since they are planning to expand. It also allows us to have additional conduits installed, which will in turn build our network. So moving forward, this evening, you're scheduled to hold a public hearing. After which, I hope that council will place ordinance number O 2023-011 on the following agenda for a second reading, and thereafter authorize the mayor to sign the ordinance granting to Zipli Fiber Pacific LLC a non-exclusive master permit to use the public right-of-way to provide non-cable telecommunications services to the public. And this concludes my presentation.
Great, any questions before I open it up for public comment?
Yes, is there a total cost for this service?
Cost to the city, there is not. They have paid the fee for the master permit, which we have received it. I don't remember the specific amount, but I can look it up. It's per our fee schedule. So it's more staff time and processing that we end up paying for, but it comes out of that fee.
So they're just taking over the contract from another?
Yes, so they purchased the facilities, the pipes and the grounds. So this is allowing them to continue having those pipes in the ground and using them so that they can then sell their service to customers within Tomwater.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Althouser.
Thanks, Mayor. So our action item tonight is to hold a public hearing, and then we will take this up on second reading in February.
Correct.
But we're not actually, we don't have to actually vote on anything in order to do that. It just gets scheduled, correct?
I believe so.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So with that, I will open up the public comment portion of our public hearing. No one has signed up. Has anyone signed up online?
No.
Is anyone in the audience wanting to make public comment? I'll ask for a second time, anyone in the audience want to make public comment? Third time, anyone wanting to make public comment? I'm closing the public comment portion. And with that, we will then be moving this to the agenda. And I'm trying to, I think it's February 6, if I'm not mistaken. So this will be on the February 6 agenda. Great, thank you, everyone. So with that, that is all of our business. And now we will go to committee reports and public health and safety. And the brand-new chair with that is Councilmember Agabi. And so if you're ready with your report, have you had a public health and safety meeting?
Come on.
There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we did have a public health and safety meeting on January 9. So it was in a agenda park meeting because we were switching from to a new chairperson. So I was selected. Leela was very grateful in trying to walk me through, even though I was bumbling along as I go. So hopefully, I did learn something. But what you have noted is the Justin County District Court Executive Officer, who came and gave us a presentation about what they have been doing. And then he gave us some statistics related to Tomwater that are specific to us. I didn't capture all of that, so I'm not going to try to pretend that I captured everything. So that was one of the main items. And then the fire department staffing adjustment. And then we did additional item where we talked about adjusting our hours from one hour on Tuesday to one and a half hour every Tuesday, and we will maintain the same day going forward. And that is as much as I have written down, except if Leela would like to help me out with what this Tomwater specific statistic we have from the District Court.
Councilmember Agabi, my pleasure, Mayor, if you don't mind. A recent article came out of the summary of how many Tomwater residents are having contact with the different courts. I think there's like five or six right now in Tomwater. And so that's a pretty good number, significant number for Tomwater regarding our contracts. So in a recent article, if you Google it, you can find it, has some more specs. It's really great, and it's informative, and these are regular meetings where they come and share all the different touchpoints of mental health, Veterans Court, right? And new court coming along of trying to identify services that will help our community members and not just putting them in jail, right? So that dance and that discussion regarding what does accountability look like and how to do and identify restitution and to make everyone whole for whatever the criminal activity was. And how to do and identify restitution and to make everyone whole for whatever the criminal activity was. Um, so it's very insightful and I think Tom Water is leading and modeling the way of what our community members need and supporting that. Thank you.
Thanks, Leila.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, next is General Government Committee and Councilmember Althausser.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. The General Government Committee met on Wednesday, January tenth. We had a packed agenda. We approved some minutes. And uh, we actually concluded our our tour through the twenty twenty-five comp plan updates. We received uh briefings on each of those elements, getting two to three briefings a month. For the past several months for our uh our looming updates to those plans. And the final one that we received that day was the transportation one provided by Mary Heather, who's here in the audience. We also uh discussed three items that were on the consent calendar this evening, the long range planning work. Um, as well as a couple of contracts with the Department of Commerce that are also related to our comp plan. So those were enacted this evening.
Great, thank you. Um, Public Works and uh Public Works Committee, uh Councilmember Swarthout.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the Public Works Committee met on January fourth. And a number of the items that were on our consent uh calendar were discussed and uh sent forward uh from that meeting. Uh, we will not be having a meeting this week. Uh, there's not uh lack of um agenda items. So I would anticipate the next Public Works meeting will be February first at eight AM.
Great, thank you. Uh, Budget and Finance Committee did not meet since our last meeting and there is not one scheduled at this time. Uh, so now we move to Mayor City Administrator Report and uh. City Administrator Parks.
Thank you, Mayor. So just a few things uh for you all. Um, winter weather obviously created an increase in work for many of our city staff people this past weekend, especially for our. Operations crews and our fire department. I would like to tell you um uh and um uh provide some kudos that the street crews did a great job. On our snow response. Uh, the fire department helped a lot of people with frozen pipes and water leaks. Our Parks and Facilities Crew responded to fire sprinkler system issues at the golf course. And our Water Resources and Sustainability Department crews were busy protecting and fixing our own facilities pipes. Um, just to name a few examples. So thank you to all our staff who went the extra mile this weekend and every day as they do. Um, their time and efforts are much appreciated. Um, I also wanted to take a, an opportunity to really thank everybody who has been involved in getting to a collective bargaining agreement with our law enforcement officers. The city's management team and the Police Guild's Bargaining Unit uh group did a fantastic job of working through the various issues. With the collective bargaining agreement with a focus on really seeking to understand and hear um each other's different perspectives. So I've, I'm um so impressed and very appreciative of all that hard work and energy that went into uh getting us to this point. Um, this is an excellent example of the city of Tom Waters' belief in people. Being put into action as we work together to serve our community. So thank you very much to everyone involved for that. And then just a reminder to the council members. If you haven't gotten your interview with our retreat facilitator Nancy Campbell scheduled. Please get in touch with Brittany tomorrow so we can get that done. And please don't forget to complete the online assessment that you received information about on January twenty-second, which is next Monday. If you have any questions about any of those items, please let me know and I'd be happy to get you that information again. And with that, I can answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so with that, I will move into uh my report. Um. As many people know, I attend a lot of external events and it just seems to be full of them lately. Uh, I was invited to attend the State of the State Address, the Capitol Building. And that happened on January ninth, which was a very uh, which was a very good address. And I would um uh say that I have the actual printout of the uh speech that the governor made. I believe that there's also some online. Uh, and so that was a great event to to attend. Uh, I also uh received a request from a community member. That their mother was having their hundredth birthday party. So last Friday, I popped into her birthday party and brought her some small gifts from the city as well as a birthday card. So it was a, it was very, it was very uh gratifying to do that because not very many people. Um, are actually achieved that goal. And so she was uh very surprised and her, her son was very happy. And uh, so that was, that was a great, great event. Um, and then I also uh. Attended the Thurston Regional Planning Council. Uh, Councilwoman Swarthout was not able to attend and and I was alternate. So uh, I was able to attend that on Friday, the twelfth also. Uh, and some of the highlights with that is we were uh reviewing the annual budget. Um, and they were also starting the nomination committee for the officers for TRPC. Had a presentation on Tom Water City or inner city transit, sorry, uh, zero admissions program. And and that is uh something that I think if anyone's interested in the zero admissions, it would be. Uh, that presentation will probably be posted here not too, in the not too distant future. Um, and had a amendment to the twenty twenty-four Unified Planning Work Program. Uh, and that was uh mostly what we covered in that meeting. And uh, that's pretty much all the meetings I attended. However. I've talked to several people and one of the things that I just want to make mention of this evening, I received word yesterday. Uh, that uh Councilmember uh Judy Hoefling passed away on Sunday. I had known Judy for like twenty years and I had the honor to sit in her council seat for eight years. And so, um, her and I were friends and uh she did a lot of great things for the city of Tom Water. And I just wanted to uh send my condolences to the family. And I will keep everyone posted if there's any service activities. But because she was such a great leader in this community, I definitely wanted to make that announcement that she had passed on Sunday. So. And with that, I will go ahead and move to council reports and. I will start with Councilmember Althausser.
All right. My mic. Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the Regional Housing Council has not met yet, but we meet a week from tomorrow. That'll be our first meeting of the new year and we'll get our agenda come Friday. And uh, the Estuary Funding Government and Work Group uh also has not met, but will be meeting on January thirty-first. So we're picking that back up with a, a new round of planning and some next steps. Looking forward to that.
Great. I'll stay in council chambers. Councilmember Jefferson.
Um, thank you, Mayor. On the eleventh of January, I attended a Experience Olympia and Beyond. Destination Master Planning Session with our very own Austin Ramirez. Now, this was a discussion to shape how our region's gonna look like in the next ten years. We talked about issues like um building a vibrant waterfront. That Olympia waterfront, we can do a lot with that and we can start doing that immediately before ten years. Um, we also talked about building new trails, hiking and walking trails to take advantage of our climate. And also what were our recommendations and views about mental health, the unhoused, drug use? Because uh customers are getting assaulted, there's a lot of crime around hotels. And it really puts a bad eye on um, on our community. So what do we, what did we feel about that? What can we do about that? Um, two positive discussions that came about. Our very own Tom Order was our partnership with SPSCC to invest in the craft brewing, education and tourism. Because that's a great masterpiece right there. We also discussed um our potential. What the old brewery revitalization will look like. Um, a partnership between Ast-Y-Y M C A. That indoor sports facility, there's some excitement about that project and what an impact it will be to our region. Um, on the fifteenth of January, like the mayor said, we attended the countywide Martin Luther King Celebration at New Life Baptist Church. And what a great event. Uh, Councilmember Van Holtz was also there. Great turnout. It was just wonderful, positive event to just see everyone in our community, just wanting to build a better community. And just celebrating his legacy of peace and nonviolence and just togetherness. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Von Holtz.
Well, I'm easing into my position, but I had my first public health and safety meeting and with councilmembers. Agabi and Dahlhoff and that was, that was. It was a good meeting. I was really excited about hearing all that's going on and about the wraparound services that. Um, Councilmember Dahlhoff mentioned earlier. I think that's, that is a strong statement of how. Important our community members are and in order to, you know, fight recidivism, citizenism. Um, we need those wraparound services to um get to the real issue. Um. For those involved in the justice system. And I did get to attend the Martin Luther King Junior event yesterday, which was wonderful. And so looking forward to more meetings.
We will keep you busy. All right, I'll go to uh Zoom, uh Councilmember Swarthout.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for attending TRPC. Um, I did have a meeting of, on the Climate Mitigation Executive Committee meeting. Um, on January eighth of twenty twenty-four. Um, we had quite a long, um, long meeting. Uh, there was a lot of business to cover. Uh, one of the items that we just had, provided information to us on, uh, we had a briefing on the statewide progress on protecting. Uh, structurally complex carbon dense forests and the potential next steps for Thurston County. And then that led to uh, uh, board uh, the Natural Resources Letter Review. That we will be sending to the Board of Natural Resources, um, asking to pause. The Thurston County Timber Sales containing uh the mature and structurally complex forests, which is what we're supposed to call now instead of the legacy forest. Uh, so we will, we will be um sending a letter to uh B N R on that issue. And then we had uh a briefing on the um, the regional, the twenty twenty-four Regional Initiative Project Plan Update. And uh, I just have to say that I, I really appreciate all the, the work that um, it's just amazing having um experts. And people from our, that are working with our cities now that we have Alyssa and each of those cities now have um a sustainable environmental person involved. And so it is just a game changer. So um, we uh discussed our, the priorities, the initiatives that we'll be doing. Um, and so uh, we'll also be talking about residential um, energy and efficiency and an electrification campaign. Um, and then, let's see, we will also be uh. Olympia is already doing something like that. It's called Energize Olympia. And so that was one of the uh initiatives that we'll be working on. Uh, quite a lot of information on that program and um, and then we also received an update uh from. The uh Citizen Advisory Work Group. They had quite a, uh, they had over forty-five applications from citizens that wanted to, residents who wanted to join um this committee. And so that is outstanding. Uh, they. I'm not sure how they did their um outreach, but they really did uh, were able to reach a, a very wide audience of people that were interested in and uh. Choosing them to, the ones that uh, to the, serve on the community. Um, this border was a task for them, but uh they will. They just were able to uh recruit a number of really uh competent and great uh intelligent, smart people that will be helping on this committee as well. And advising uh the executive committee. So that is my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Good report, Councilmember Swarthout. Um, so one update I have for everyone is regarding Thurston County nine-one-one communications. Uh, and I want to still remember, because I had to look it up, is November two thousand nineteen. Uh, there was a ballot measure to raise funds for switching the radios that are police and fire and um EMS use. From analog to digital. It's like a forty million dollar project. It was passed November two thousand nineteen. And then funds were collected in a year, right? And so that's twenty twenty. And then there is an assessment of our coverage, right, for all the jurisdictions and coverage for calls coming in and then dispatch. And two, there are multiple towers were identified for better coverage. So two of those towers, one is in DuPont. Working with Joint Base Lewis McCord and another one is with the county, Thurston County. It's been two years and we're still working on the permits for those two locations. So I think it was just a great reminder of things that we can control. And when we have partnerships and collaborations with external entities, um, sometimes it is out of our control. And a great reminder of permitting processes and timelines and expectations. And I think I'm transitioning to, I'm excited for our council retreat to have that discussion of what that means for Tom Water. Uh, of permitting and the process and the flow and contact points, because it has been over two years. With Thurston County nine-one-one seeking permits to do a tower to be able to save people's lives. That's my update. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I just want to get clarification, that tower is not located in the city of Tom Water, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Great question, Mayor. Great question. Now, we are golden.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilmember Agabi.
Thanks, Mayor. So on the tenth of uh, this month, I attended the public uh. Thurston County Public Constitution Council. If we uh did a election of new officers and uh. Our two current chair and vice chair are returning. And Dali Madron is stepping away from our position. She's currently the second vice chair. Uh, in terms of uh. Agenda, it was a heavy agenda for the first uh meeting of the year. So I'm just gonna give you a summation of what we talked about, because there are too many of them. So there was an amendment, a proposed amendment to the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-seven Regional Transportation Improvement Program, RTIP. So the city of Olympia and Thurston County requested amended to the uh twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-seven RTIP. Uh, for this program. The only area that actually I think concerns us is Thurston County Tilly Road South. And Old Iowa ninety-nine southwest, the Goodard Road southwest. That is a reconstruction project. That is being um either currently on the, on the walks or that is going to be going on around that area. Um, and then we talked extensively about um. The trails, which. Went on and on and on and on. So for the trails, um, there has been some software program update. That you could look, that you could download and would tell you uh what the trails look like and how to get there and what are the conditions. And that is because some of those trails right now, currently, some people say that they are not very secure. If you were traveling on the one that goes uh, up that goes from um. Yeah, more the way down to uh Lacy. Uh, during the dark is a very, uh, some people that are doing the dark or doing at this time of the day, it is very, very difficult to see where you're going. And your security is not guaranteed. So the software and the program will help you to. Start uh to navigate. And then we also talked about um. Congestion management processes and the twenty twenty-four legislative priorities. So those are the um summaries that I captured. For our meeting. Thank you.
Great, thank, thank you, Councilmember Agabi. Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um. I have a brief report, but first I'd like to go back and um to Eileen's report, which I agree with uh. Councilmember Dahlhoff, that was a great report. Uh, I think it uh. It, it shows that we are moving on um environment, on climate. Um, and on the emergency that we, we passed at this uh council. Um, one of the things I'd like to have you repeat, if you wouldn't mind, is so we no longer have legacy trees. One of the things I'd like to have you repeat, if you wouldn't mind, is, so we no longer have legacy trees, but we're now going to call them what?
Okay, let me bring that part back up again.
I mean, and why are we naming?
Well, because they didn't, there was something about legacy forests that they didn't like that terminology. And so, so now they're referred to as the structurally complex carbon dense forests. And so those are the, again, the, you know, the older stands of trees that we have here in Thurston County that we would like to protect.
Structurally complicated, you say?
Structurally complex.
Complex. What does that mean?
That's a good question. I think because they're older, I'm not your biologist, or let's see, I'm not your tree person, but again, I think it all circles back to, because newer trees, I think the older trees collect more carbon, I think. And I don't know if Alyssa's online here, but to save me, but I believe that that's, the older trees collect more carbon compared like to the newer trees that are flat, or, yeah. And so again, thanks to actually Commissioner Mensah, who started this, made us all aware a couple of years ago about this, working on this project and working towards it and trying to get Department of Natural Resources to, to be partnered in this, because it's an interesting process, very complex, Councilmember Kathy, and I'd love to talk to you about it sometime.
Yeah, I, I'd like to talk to you about it also, because I, I don't think that's a friendly, understandable explanation. I mean, it may be for the trees and for what they are and what you're, you're trying to, you know, work on in, in your group and in your committee. But to the average person, that means nothing about a forest. I mean, old growth, legacy, you know, eighty years plus, any, anything that this does not communicate to the average person who cares about environment and forest and, and the trees without knowing technical things, what, what it is you're talking about. That, that for feedback back to your committee. And they'll probably all sigh and say, we know who said that.
No, it's very, it's, I, I truly understand what you're asking and, and how you feel about this. And we share that sentiment as well. And it's, I don't know how much discussion we have, but it's just, you know, agency to agency, trying to make the decisions. A lot of the counties, when they do harvest sales, they depend on that revenue for their county budgets. So it's, it's an interesting place to be in. So, so there'll be more discussion to follow on that, you know?
Very good. Well, I want to be sure we talk to the common, ordinary people who can help us with climate change and not just agency to agency kind of thing. I want to take what the agency's doing and get it, get it out there on the branches and let it blow into the community wind is what I, I'd like. And the other comment I wanted to make, Councilmember Swarthout, is that the reason that you had forty-five people is because that's how interested and how concerned and how hopefully excited people are about the environment. And you're right, not very many serve on a committee get that, often get that many people. And so I'm glad you're.
Well, actually, this is our second round, because we had a first round and we have a, there was a board in place. And so, and so it was time to renew that. And so that's, the first one didn't have nearly as many people apply. So that's why they did change their, their outreach. And so we were able to reach a wider audience. And so I think that's a success there. So that's how that came about.
Right, yeah. And I think it's just the work that groups like yours and cities ours are doing. People, people want to know what's happening and have a say in that and put it, well, I had attended the Solid Waste Advisory Council meeting and also General Government and the Olympic Region Clean Air Agency. And other than the, the General Government, the other two committees, it was the first committee of the new year. And both of these committees are very, I won't say dependent, but it impacts them a lot, what goes on in the legislature with different bills and so forth. So that took up these two meetings really, and I won't go into detail at this time, but be talking to you along the way about what we're doing in light of what's happening in the legislature this year. And thank you, Councilmember Swarthout, for engaging me and off the record in conversation. Hail to the trees.
Thank you, Councilmember Kathy. All right. So the next item on our agenda is we are going to be moving to executive session. And the council will meet in executive session to discuss potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110 sub one, sub I. And we expect this council executive session to last twenty minutes. So we will be back at eight, I'm trying to do math here, eight fifteen. And with that, we will not be taking any action, we're not expected to take action, following the executive session. So you do not need to sit and wait for us to come back. And we will adjourn if, unless you choose to. We will adjourn when we return. So with that, we are recessed. Thank you.
Joan, are we supposed to log out?
Uh, yeah, log out and log back in.
Yeah. You do, you do need to log out and go to the executive session email I sent. If you needed to me to resend, let me know.
Thank you.
So we will be back at 8:25. Thank you. As we are going to be extending for five more minutes, so we will return at 8:30. The session for a period of five more minutes, so we will return at 8:30. Give session for a period of five more minutes, so we will return at 8:30. All right, it's 8:35. I'm calling the meeting back to order. We are now out of executive session. Do we have any other business this evening? With that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.